Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, July 17, 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda. We have both an addition and deletion to the agenda. The deletion is on the front page under the opening bids and that would be to delete the item to discuss the purchase/release of mobile radios for the Fire and Public Works Department. And then on the second page, under New Business, under Item 6, the addition of considering the proposal to provide engineering services for sewer and water GIS information. So your pleasure with the agenda and the addition and deletion.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I talked to Ken a little earlier today. I wanted to add, just a council approval if so, for a thank you note in the paper to our volunteers and participants for the citywide garbage cleanup.
Under New Business, you would like to have considered a thank you note to the
Yeah, it would cost about $100 to have that published in the paper. Yeah.
That would also be an addition. So the council's pleasure with the agenda with the addition, two additions and deletion. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the agenda with the addition and deletions.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Are there none question?
Aye.
Aye.
Alvo yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the two additions and the deletion. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the July 3, excuse me, July 3, 2017 City Council Meeting.
I'd move on the minutes.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Are there none question?
Aye.
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 Alvo yes, motion is carried and minutes are approved. Thank you. For the payment of claims and the approval of the accounts payable, we have transfers to the general fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $18,285; to the Permanent Improvement Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, payment of $25,000; and to the Reserve for Capital Outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, a transfer of $17,428. Accounts payable claims would be City of International Falls, $296,527.58; Airport Commission claims of $3,140.98; and Library Board claims of $5,271.55. Council's pleasure with the transfers and the accounts payable claims.
I'll move the approval of those.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to adopt a resolution approving the payment of the accounts payable and the transfers.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion on the resolution. Are there none question?
Aye.
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 Alvo yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, transfers and payment of claims are approved. Thank you. Anyone in the audience that has a, wants to bring something to the attention of the council that is not on the agenda at this time? Be another opportunity at the close of the meeting for audience participation also. We'll move to the opening of bids and approve the low quote from three vendors for the Fire Department helmets, hoods, boots, and gloves, a total cost of $25,595.50 from the Fire Department budget for capital outlay for equipment. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve that low quote from those three different vendors.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion. Are there none question?
Aye.
Aye.
Alvo yes, motion is carried and the low quote purchase is approved. Thank you. Move to Item Oil Business and we have a presentation by the Community Design Group, WSB, on the Comprehensive Plan Vision and Value Statements. Antonio, Jono, and Brienne.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep this somewhat brief, but that was an incredibly efficient first. Hello, my name is Jono Coghill. I am here with Community Design to talk a little bit about where we're at with this comprehensive planning process. I'm going to speak a little bit to what we've done so far and then turn it over, talk a little bit about, and then I'll wrap it up by talking about. To bring folks up to date, right now, we have closed off our round of community engagement, which included seven in-person engagement events, listening sessions, stakeholder interviews, which are still ongoing, and as well as an online survey, which garnered responses and got us some really, really rich community for being part of that and really spending the time, so many of you, to really, that are important to you. Falls is a vital, livable space for now. Some great feedback and we're using that feedback to do a couple of things, to guide the, also to develop visions, a vision statement, and a set of value statements. And earlier today, our project steering team, the folks that are steering this project, which include community leaders, and we talked a little bit about the vision and value statements and started moving into thinking about what are the practical and implementable strategies that we can use to act most alike and does what it needs to for today. Value statements and we'll be putting it up on the website, which is envision-if.org. Our vision and value statements are there. I hesitate to bring them out right now because, suffice to say, they come from a long and a very in-depth process of listening to community members, reading thousands and thousands of comments from community members to come up with some baseline. And we're using that then to develop a plan section and the other aspect of this plan are zoning and plating updates and I will turn it over to Brienne to talk about that aspect of this comprehensive plan.
Please.
Council members, public, my name is Brienne Rothstein. I'm with WSB and Associates. I'm working under Community Design Group on the zoning amendment and land use regulation amendments. Zoning code and plating or land use regulations are the implementing factor for your comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan is a 30,000-foot view of the future of your community and the zoning is the nitty-gritty, I would say, where your zoning administrator here at the city is tasked with making sure that the regulations and policies in the city are followed. So it's been quite a while since most of your zoning code has been updated, many, many years, although pieces of it have been updated more recently, but a lot of the original zoning code dates back to the 60s. So what we're doing right now is starting with what I could call an audit. So I'm here in the next two days to listen to the vision and values and the things that the council or the steering committee have deemed important because that would guide the work of what sections of the zoning code are most. From here, we will be developing annotated kind of list of things we want to focus on, ordinances and policies we want to focus on, and the work of the comprehensive plan will be a good base for that. For example, if from the comprehensive plan we talk about the need to mixed-use districts or to allow more flexibility in our, in our planning, then we would need to update the zoning regulations to allow for that. The zoning is the, is the legal framework for implementing and enforcing your comprehensive plan. So they go hand-in-hand, so it's very insightful and proactive of you to be doing both at the same time because a plan without zoning is, is a lot harder to implement. So with that, I'll keep it short unless there's any questions about zoning or the zoning particularly portion of this project.
I'd like to just wrap this up briefly, talk about kind of our next steps and what we're envisioning for going forward in finishing up this plan, which is really exciting because again, as Brienne said, some of this opportunity to do some exciting work then, that's new and fresh. So what we're looking at is within the next month, by the end of August, wrapping up drafts of the plan sections. We have six plan sections. Project steering team and then to the, that's what we're looking at. It also depends on responsive to the project steering team and the community.
I should have asked this of Brienne. On the zone, on the land use and zoning, one of our stumbling blocks has been that we've had regulations concerning land use in a number of different sections of the code. So I would assume that what we'll see is more uniformity when we're done with this, that there is less contradictory language in the different sections of the code regarding land use. I just assumed that that's true. I never actually asked that, but I wanted to reassure myself.
That's, that's a really good question and a good point and we want to make sure everything is consistent and if there are discrepancies in other chapters, we would want to call that out and come up with a solution for that without having to rewrite your entire code ordinances. So I think where there is opportunities to eliminate discrepancies without having to rewrite the whole thing, yes.
Okay. Because I do remember we had a long discussion at council about what a farm animal was. It seemed that there were different interpretations in different sec, chapters, as well as some question as to the applicability and harmonization of, of codes that regard housing and rental property.
So nuisance is typically an ordinance that isn't in your zoning, but does very much impact housing and neighborhoods. And so as we go through this process, if there are particular sections that are related to zoning, but maybe not in that actual chapter, we want to look at those as well, absolutely.
Thank you, Brienne.
Mr. McCarthy?
I have one, Dan McCarthy. I've been, I've been listening to the process here and I'm not against comprehensive planning. However, if you look at it from a side, it's kind of a way of presenting how the city should be developed without inside knowledge or experience in that area. The assumption is that this plan will address the needs and wants of future economic, residential, and other public entities for the use of the land. So then the next question that comes to my mind is what kind of a problem is it to change the zoning if it does not match for the demand of what occurs five, 10 years from now? What is the process of changing the zone to meet the needs of something that has become obvious within the community here that these are, this particular activity, whether it be commercial, whether it be residential, or whether it be public, fits into the plan? So in other words, are we, of course called, into a process here whereby we have to go through a tremendous amount of effort here in order to change or something that becomes obvious within the majority of the community or the leadership of the community that it doesn't fit the zoning as outlined in the comprehensive plan?
Let me just try to lead off there. Mr. McCarthy, I think the, the zoning certainly is, can always be changed through, through ordinance and expect that change in the ordinance does take some time and consideration and I think that's, that's good. I think that government should move slowly on some things, but at the same time, be flexible enough to take and be able to, to make changes as the, the world changes and social structures change and so forth. So Brienne, if you would add to that or?
Yeah, very good answer, Mayor. So the, the plant, the comp plan is the guiding principles, the high level view, the zoning is the regulatory or the legal framework, but it is changeable. And so if you had a property that was guided for commercial and it, somebody wanted to use it for residential or industrial, they could request a change and as long as it was consistent with the vision and, of the City Council, they could approve it. So it's not meant to be written in its own and never changed. It's, it's a guiding principle and then the zoning is sort of the more legal tool, but can be changed upon action by the City Council people.
Question, Mayor, is that my observation of what's happened in this area is when change is proposed, it's a laborious process to get done here and not having requested it myself personally. There, there's a lot of time, committee meetings here, all kinds of things that delay here in implementation of something that is a fault fundamentally sound for the community.
And I think, if I can just build on what Brienne said, you know, I think the City Charter calls for a planning commission of nine citizens and they would also be a part of that process of, of any change in zoning and, and also in helping us to complete this comprehensive plan. So they'll, they'll be part of the, citizens will be part of the process.
Thanks for the education.
Welcome. Jono, maybe just, could you just highlight the, what I, if I recall, seven different areas that the comprehensive plan is going to focus on?
Yeah.
I think they're on the back, was it on the?
Well, are you thinking of the, the statements or?
That or the, or the areas that I think you highlighted today for us.
Chapters, yeah. Chapters are land use and zoning, housing, they are environmental, or environmental and heritage preservation, and then there are utilities, economic development, and the last.
Transportation.
Transportation, oh good. So those are the, they're.
Those are the areas that the, will be looked at in this comprehensive plan and
Underneath those, a lot of other issues are going to be.
They're good. Other points or questions by the council or citizens with regard to the comprehensive plan and land use and zoning that will be taking place?
Oh, Mayor.
Please.
I'm grateful for your leadership in this matter because it was, when the mayor came on board, he said, "We need this. We haven't had one for quite a while." And I'm looking forward to a vision emanating from this because vision drives effort and enthusiasm and we won't get anywhere without that. So this is a necessary thing that we're doing. Money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for, for being here with us and, and helping to, to guide us through this process because it's been 50 years since we've had one and time to put the pencil to the paper, so. Thank you again. I will move to the next item on the agenda and that's New Business and we're going to consider a request to close Second Street between 9th and 10th Avenues for a neighborhood street party from 5:30 PM to 10:30 PM on Saturday, August 19. And the request is from Ben Welsh. I don't know that Ben was able to make it here, but this is the second year that they have had this street party in their neighborhood and would ask the council to approve that request.
I would move to, to approve the request.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the request to close Second Street between 9th and 10th Avenue for a street party.
I will second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the closure.
I attended this last year, this specific one, and it was fantastic. And I think, last year, I think a couple officers even stopped out just to do a meet and greet and talk to the people. I think this is great. It helps with blight because you start seeing who your neighbor is, start worrying about more of the people that live in your neighborhood. I highly recommend other neighborhoods do this type, type of thing. Wonderful, wonderful evening last year. I expect the same this year.
Our neighborhood does the same thing, but not on the street. We, we just have it in, in a backyard neighborhood block party. It is the August date where they have the night out for neighborhoods?
I don't.
Night out, what night, day is that?
It's August 1st.
August 1st, okay. Yeah.
Further discussion with regard to the motion?
Mayor?
Please.
Then this motion is to agree to sponsor, serve as a co-sponsor for the event, so insurance would be covered by the city if something were happening.
And we would, we would provide the barricades for that street?
Right.
Question?
Aye.
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 Alvo yes, motion is carried and request for the closure of the street is approved. Thank you. Item number two under New Business is the proclamation establishing the Complex Regional Pain Syndrome, Color the World Orange Day, November the 6th of 2017, and the CRPS Awareness Month of November 2017. Your pleasure with that proclamation.
I would move on the proclamation.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation.
I guess this is necessary because I never heard of this before.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I believe the person that brought it to my attention is in the audience. If she'd like to come up and speak.
Wonderful. Please come forth.
Please.
Sit down, please.
Hello. Hi. CRPS is Complex Regional Pain Syndrome. It's a neurological disease where it can occur if you have an injury or just spontaneously. And what it is, is the pain receptors in a limb or somewhere else in the body just don't stop. And so the person is in constant pain, high-level pain. This is the highest rated pain, chronic pain disease in the medical field to date. It's higher than amputation pain, higher than cancer pain, higher than childbirth, all of it. So, and it's, there is no cure. There's only, you can try medication, you can try a TENS unit, which is electrotherapy, different types of therapies, but some go into remission, but most do not. And it does, it can spread. Mine started in my right hand after having carpal tunnel surgery, but they can't determine if it was there prior to surgery or if it was there after surgery and I was misdiagnosed. So basically, if I had CRPS before the surgery, going in for surgery progressed it and irritated it. If I get into a car accident, there's a good 99% chance I'm going to come out, oh, a lot worse. I have to wear a medical ID band so that if I am in an accident or if I fall and I can't verbally tell people, "Don't touch my arm," they put a blood pressure cuff on it or a needle in it, can make it worse and make it spread further into my body. Right now, it's been two years since I was diagnosed and it's gone from just my hand to my entire right arm. So I hope that answered your question.
How do you stay so calm and collected with this?
Practice.
God, I'm impressed. I thank you for bringing this to our attention because I wasn't aware of this disease until now.
It's not a very well diagnosed disease. A lot of people don't believe that somebody can be in pain constantly or that they're trying to use the system. So there's, I can't tell you how many times I've had to look at people and go, "There is something wrong." And be told by doctors, "You don't have CRPS, you're just not using it enough." So the believing part is, is the most important part that, you know, you can tell by my arm that it's discolored and it has little spots on it. Sometimes it goes completely purple, sometimes it's red, it swells, it gets to the point where just a light touch and I will be in tears. I've been going to OT for it for almost, this November, this November will be two years. So, yeah.
Well, it's good that you're sharing this because there must be other people in the community who are suffering and may not.
I know of two others in town. So I just want to get the awareness out so that we can do a little bit more about it, maybe do fundraisers, that sort of thing, so that we can put a little bit more into the research of finding a cure or at least better management.
While researching this, to, to help Bonnie with this particular thing, I found there is advocacy groups online and I believe it's Bonnie's intention to put us, in our proclamation, along with other cities and states across the United States, the, yeah, the world. And also, this was already adopted by our state governor, so.
Many places in Minneapolis actually light up orange on the day of CRPS. So, and that's why it's called Color the World Orange, is that on that day or night, everybody changes their lights to orange. The, what is it? The Bank of America building in Dallas that always has the green lights running down it completely changes to orange. And a lot of places in Australia, Paris, Niagara Falls, a lot of them change, so.
Further questions or comments? Very helpful, Bonnie. Thank you for that explanation.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for the record, I didn't catch, is it Bonnie? I didn't catch your name.
Bonnie, yeah.
Okay.
Further discussion with regard to the motion?
I didn't catch your name.
Bonnie Yang.
Further discussion with regard to the motion or the proclamation? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and proclamation is adopted and will be published. Thank you. Item number three is under new business is to approve the appointment of Christine Carlson, Janelle Johnson, and Jared Baldwin to serve in EMTB position in the fire rescue EMS department of the city. That will be effective upon their application review and licensure by the state. Your pleasure with the appointment. Motion by Councilor Briggs to appoint those three. Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and the appointments are approved. Thank you. Item number four under new business is to adopt the joint powers agreement establishing a joint recreation commission and defining its powers for the year 2017, 2018. Motion by Councilor Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drogba. Question on the motion or the joint powers agreement for recreation?
I just have a few questions.
Please.
This is the first I've seen of it in the packet. Were there any major changes? Because I'm not recalling.
Administrator?
Mr. Mayor and council, the, this is essentially the same form that was approved by the city council last year. The principal change would be shown on page four under activity levy revenue. And it refers to the total contribution that the school district can make, and it's based on, or it's calculated based on adjusted pupil units. So each year, that dollar amount changes a little bit. For this year, for 2017 and 2018, the amount is $99,156.93. And again, that's based on an adjusted pupil unit number. And you can see that the recreation department will receive about $71,392.99. So that for 72%, the other 28% is retained by the school district. So those would be the principal changes from the previous year.
One of the things that we used to have in the agreement was a set dollar amount rather than, we stated that the city would contribute, I think it was $71,500, which is close to the levy amount, which is the 50/50 kind of contribution arrangement. And so we no longer have that in the agreement, a set amount.
We adopt, the recreation commission adopted their budget in April and advised the city, and I believe that number was 79?
I think it was 81,000.
81,000, okay.
But I think it was 81,111, which is higher than it was last year. But that budget will be presented to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on the 24th.
Okay. I have, you know, the thing, thing is also is that, I mean, I'm not on the rec commission. I don't want to rock any boats here, but the city, the school district, we get charged for their van, right? We, the rec commission gets charged for the use of the city van or the school district van, correct?
They have proposed that, yes.
Yeah. And I guess when I, when I look at this agreement, I think there's much that the city contributes without charging for certain things, and that the school district should also contribute as well in the same vein. So I guess I would question the charge for the van is what I'm saying. It isn't addressed in here, but also, nothing is said about our director being involved with the city's position of rec director. What is it? It's?
Activity director.
Activity director at the school district.
Yeah, so that really doesn't properly belong in the agreement, I guess, but I don't know. Just questions I have. Maybe I should come to a rec commission.
I think very, very good question. Certainly, the recreation commission members did question that. I know that as a part of their budget considerations, the school district and school board did ask that the rec commission be charged for the use of the van. And you're absolutely correct. Both parties, the school district and the city, have contributed the use of their facilities and equipment over the years without piecemealing it.
Okay. So that's to be worked out separate from this agreement. It's, you want, I mean, it's a wonderful thing, this partnership we have, and certainly don't want to disrupt any goodwill and whatever, but those are some of my questions.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions with regard to the joint powers agreement? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and joint powers agreement establishing the rec commission is approved. Thank you. Item number five under new business is to review the approval steps and request of the Granite Digital Realty for the tax abatement and consider a draft resolution setting a pay-as-you-go tax abatement hearing. Administrator?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I believe at the June meeting, the city council had authorized moving forward with approving a business subsidy agreement and moving forward with a developer's agreement for that Granite Digital Realty project. And, you know, it's a substantial development in the community. The investment was projected to be over $76.5 million. About five of that, as an estimate, was going to be in real estate approvals and an expansion to the existing facility where the former US Army Reserve Center was located. So the city and Granite Digital has requested that both the county and the city provide tax abatement as a financial incentive to the project, which would be consistent with what most data centers receive around the country as a financial incentive. What I've suggested and what I've identified in my memo is some general steps that need to be addressed as part of this process, and it's A through G there. And I won't recite those again, but you can see that there's a number of things that we need to do. We need to adopt a business subsidy policy. I'm suggesting that the city develop a tax increment financing guide or a policy about how and when we would apply tax abatements to a public, a project in the community and what criteria we would follow and if there's any limitations that would be appropriate or types of uses that it would be appropriate for. So that would be something that we need to do more work on. I'm also suggesting that we develop a tax abatement financing application form and have an initial application fee that can help offset any of our upfront expenses in terms of developing a development agreement, preparing a business subsidy policy, which you need to do for every project where we're providing public assistance, I believe over $25,000. And so I'm recommending that those steps be taken sometime between now and when an actual public hearing would be held for the tax abatement hearing. And we are required, if we're going to provide tax abatement, we need to have a public hearing. So what I've provided in this memo and the attachment is a draft template of what a resolution would look like when the council wants to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for the proposed property tax abatement. I'm suggesting that right now that this staff be authorized to coordinate with the developer and then to the city's consultants that we've used in the past, Briggs and Morgan and Northland Securities, to do an appropriate financial analysis and to get some recommendation from both of them on this project where we can refine the analysis and then prepare the appropriate approval documents before the public hearing is actually held. And then I'm asking that you authorize the city administrator and the mayor to set the date and advertise the notice for the public hearing when we feel that the information is sufficient to meet the statutory requirements. So I provided the resolution with showing the general draft format. I probably would not recommend that we set the date yet because I don't know how much time might be necessary to get sufficient information to analyze and calculate the property taxes. I know that the county has already gone forward with this process, and they feel that the information has been sufficient for their purposes, but I think this gives us the maximum amount of flexibility, and I in no way, shape, or form want to delay the project, but I think it's appropriate for us to have a few of those steps in place before we move forward.
You're not really asking for any specific action tonight?
Well, a motion perhaps, like you said, recommending that it'd be under number one and two, under the recommendation at the bottom of my memo, where just authorizing us to coordinate with the developer and our consultants to do the appropriate analysis and get the information we need so we can use that to prepare the business subsidy policy and the development agreement, at least a draft of the development agreement, and the resolution for the tax abatement.
I'll move the city administrator's recommendations for the council action.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw then to recommend the items number one and number two, the recommendations of the city administrator with regard to coordinating with the developer and consulting with Briggs and Morgan for legal and with Northland Securities for financial advisory services and to authorize the administrator and the mayor to set the date and advertise a public hearing. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion. Councilor Drogba.
Ken, can you explain the pay-as-you-go tax abatement? I don't, I read through the information, but I don't understand that.
Well, it wasn't discussed a lot in the information that was attached, but instead of having to actually issue debt to pay for whatever improvement costs the city might have to pay for, you can do it on a pay-as-you-go basis that we would upfront the expenses if it's curb and gutter or extending the sewer and water from the main into the building, those types of expenses which they've requested generally of the city. We would use our upfront monies and then be paid back over time on a pay-as-you-go basis. So when property taxes are paid and they're distributed to the county, we receive that money and then it's abated back to the developer. We could potentially retain some of that money, which would be something that we would negotiate here in this interim process, to use that money in the future to pay ourselves back for whatever our costs are. And I don't have a good idea for those costs, and again, that's why we want to have more time to talk about what precisely needs to be done on the site and how much it's going to cost to do it. One thing the council might recall is that a number of years ago, and I believe it's when South Falls was still in place, there was a, I believe, a six-inch water main that basically bisected the property in half. And so we're attempting to locate exactly where that is and then determine what the costs are to abandon that. And there's some question, depending on where it's located on the site and where the first phase of the development project for Granite Digital is, we may not have to move that right away, and we could save time for doing that during part of Phase Two. And our engineering or our public work staff is locating that now. So it has to be abandoned, there's an expense to that. If we have to extend it or do a connection somewhere else, those are some of the things that I want to try and get a clear idea about what our expenses or the city's expenses will be to promote that project.
I guess the question that I would have for the city administrator would be, do we have a, even an estimate as to what the consultants of Briggs and Morgan and Northland Securities costs might be in preparing some of the documents for us?
Typically, we would be charged a hourly fee. We can ask for a not-to-exceed fee. I did speak directly with the legal counsel, and she indicated that for a very basic pay-as-you-go tax abatement project, the legal expenses could be as little as $2,000 to $2,500. But she was very careful to qualify that. She says if we're sitting at a negotiating table with four attorneys or five attorneys and they're asking, you know, and you're going through iteration after iteration after iteration, clearly the meter's going to be running and it's going to cost more than that. I don't anticipate any of that. I mean, everything's been very amicable. It's fairly straightforward, fairly simple, but, so her estimate was $2,000 to $2,500. It would be very, much less than that if all we need to do is have our financial advisor confirm what the value of the building expansion is going to be and then what the proposed property taxes generated from that would be. That would be relatively cheap. It would be on an hourly basis. And then I think the city council would probably want to see what the tax impacts would be on the value of various properties in the community. So if your house is worth $50,000, what's our subsidy really amounting to? And they have software programs that can do that.
And the second part of that question would be, what kind of timeline to have these documents prepared are we looking at?
Well, I think preparing the business subsidy policy and the guidelines and application form, I've also done, already done some research from other communities, and we can draft some. There's some standard templates that are available at Deed, so that would be relatively quick. I think what would take some time and what I can't nail down is how firm the developers' numbers are in terms of what the proposed expansion costs are going to be. I don't know if it's just a guesstimate of $150 a foot for 60 or 40,000 feet. I'm not sure where they're coming up with those numbers. So that's what I want to coordinate with our financial advisor to see, can we just ballpark it or do we need to be a little bit more precise about that? And I'm not sure how long that will take. It's somewhat dependent on what the developer can provide us and how long it will take them.
And just for the record, the property that you were speaking to about having the water line that bisected would be the Army Reserve property that is owned by the county?
Yes.
Okay, just for the record. Secondly, Mr. Marshawn, who is a developer, is here this evening. Do you have any questions or any statements that you would want to make, Joe? Good. So that the process sounds reasonable to you in moving forward with getting these documents prepared? All right, very good. Counsel, any other questions or discussions with regard to the motion by Councilor Jacksaw and second by Councilor Briggs to adopt those recommendations of the city administrator? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and that will go forward. Thank you. Item number six is the addition, one of the additions to the agenda, and that's to consider the Woodson Smith and Oting, our consulting engineers, proposal to provide engineering services for the sewer and water GIS information build-out for a not-to-exceed fee of $16,500. Just maybe for a point of information for, I know Councilor Jacksaw was out of town and Councilor Briggs was working, and so they weren't able to, no, you were here. Councilor Drogba was out of town and Councilor Jacksaw was out of town. But the, we had a great presentation by Woodson Smith and Oting with regard to the street conditions of International Falls, and they put together some wonderful information there. One of the questions that we had would be how to understand exactly what the water and sewer services that are underneath those streets are. And so the city administrator and I had a conversation with Woodson Smith and Oting in providing that information to us, and they would go through every block of the city and understand what level of water and sewer piping and so forth is there, as I understand it. City administrator, if you have any comments?
No, I would agree with that absolutely. It wasn't, it was a good report, and it was very detailed, yet general and fairly simple to understand regarding the street conditions and assessment. And we think that the next piece, as you pointed out, is try and get an idea about what we have for water and sewer. Obviously, if we're going to be doing any upgrades to any streets and there's underground water sewer utilities, including storm sewer that need upgrades, that's going to change the complexion of the project and the cost of the project in a street reconstruction. So we want to try and come up with those numbers, and that's what this fee for $16,500 would do is give us an idea about where those issues are, and it should be adequate for planning purposes, but not necessary to the level of detail that you would have for full design plans and specifications.
But I think it would put us into the 21st century as far as information goes, which most cities have in a GIS system, and we are lacking today. So council's pleasure with that proposal to have Woodson Smith and Oting provide sewer and water GIS information for the city. Motion by Counselor Pearson?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or further discussion with regard to the providing those services?
I'm delighted. I mean, if we're going to do something about infrastructure, this is the path, and I'm glad we're moving along. I'm so glad.
Mr. Mayor, for Counselors Jackson and Doba being, they weren't there, to kind of just in a nutshell clue you in what this is about, they had taken all our streets and put the conditions from a one to a five. And the biggest bang for the buck for the city, cost-wise, would be to fix all your twos and threes. But without knowing what's underneath so far as the condition in the water and sewer, it could change that from a two or three to one of the fives, which the five is going to be your most costly fix to a street. So in order for us to really plan that, we need to know what's underneath it. So that's the reason why we're doing this.
Have you been provided a copy of the, okay?
Yeah, I haven't read it yet, though.
Okay. Counselor Doba?
As on the Public Works Board, I'm kind of surprised that we don't already have this information at our hands. I mean, I'm not, I just find that we don't know what service they're in right now without hiring an engineer firm to do it.
We have it on paper to some degree.
So that's what this is, is updating it, putting it into computer forms?
Computer technology.
Don will be working with this, right?
Well, Mr. Mayor, all this work is for the WSN to prepare the documents, and they have a pretty good amount of, they've been our consulting engineer for a number of years and worked on a number of projects, so they've got a lot of information already present. And again, it's going to be converted and put into a GIS format. There's some areas of the city where we don't have that information, and they'll be working with our Public Works Department staff to try and assemble that. So the short answer is, is we have a lot of paper documentation. It's not into a format or a condition that it's in GIS format, which is much more easily accessible and retrievable. And again, hopefully we'll have a plan similar to the one that you saw for the street conditions. We'll have a similar plan that shows the condition of the water and sewer underlying that. And then that'll be key to deciding where we want to prioritize our funds to fixing up roads and/or sewer and water if it's needed.
I shared with the mayor a little earlier a conversation I had with Representative Eklund, and he seemed, well, he suggested that we approach the state legislature with a request for bonding on INI. So our Legislative and Land Use Committee, we need to be on that for the next legislative session. If we have the information at hand as to what our sewer looks like, we could pig, you know, we could leverage different resources, and so I think this is very timely. I'm really excited, and I thank you again, thank the committee and WSN, it's all progress, right?
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. I think you raised another piece of information, and that's, we should be receiving shortly a report from Woodson Smith and Oting on the, we had thirty monitors in our sewer system to monitor when we had rainfalls during June and part of July. And so I think we'll be receiving some information on that INI issue, which could help us to prepare a request for bonding.
Yeah.
So we're getting, building more of this information on the infrastructure, and I think we'll be better prepared to make decisions as a council. Further discussion? Thank you, Counselor Briggs, for your presentation there. Hearing nothing further, then we'll move forward with the question on whether to provide engineering services from Woodson Smith and Oting on the sewer and water GIS information. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No vote yes, motion is carried, and the approval is made to move forward with that request for engineering services. Thank you. Item number seven is an addition, and Counselor Jackson has requested to place a thank you note to volunteers for the city cleanup, and...
We don't have, you know, I figure it'll be about a hundred dollars. I don't know what's left in our budget, we haven't received all the bills.
I think it's a very reasonable request. I think we ought to do both the newspaper and the radio.
Actually, I wanted to mention that thanks to Dwayne, we had PSA, free PSA announcements. I really appreciate that.
Right, I think having some ads on the radio and in the newspaper, so if you would move that, I'll...
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make a motion that we approve expenditures for a thank you both on our local radio station and in the newspaper.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion? I think it was a great, great piece of work. Thank you for those who participated.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to preface this, I'm going to vote no on it, but it's not against the people. I just don't think that it's a, you know, I voted no for other advertising of stuff, and I just don't see the public purpose of it. But I do respect everyone that was involved in it, I'm not trying to get against that.
We'll have a drink later.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye, no.
Aye.
No vote yes, there being four for the motion and one against, the motion carries, and thank you notes will be placed in the newspaper and the radio. Thank you. Anything further to come under new business? Not, we'll move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City administrator?
No reports, sir.
Thank you. City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, council, I met last week with Matt Donahue to go over, he's obtained some, an estimate in a format for the signage at the Donahue Trail, the Donahue property, and I forwarded that to the city administrator so that it can be considered as part of the budget process.
Good.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Chief? Mr. Mayor? I've included back as my June report, June activity report for the police department. If I'm citing the numbers, you'll see that our workload for 2016 by quite a bit has generated. Most notably, I'd like to point out that our drug enforcement team executed five search warrants within the city last month. As a result of that, we seized suspected methamphetamine, heroin, and also took a firearm into custody. As a result, seven adults were taken into custody and six juveniles were brought home. So that battle continues. That said, I'd like to remind you all that Tuesday, August 1st, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. will be our first attempt at national night out, so hoping for participation from all of you.
So, what do we do?
Come over to the park and show up.
All right.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, very park.
Are you going to have food?
We are, yes.
Even then, we'll come there.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of participation from all the law enforcement agencies on that day, and again, the Community Wellness Action Council will be participating with yard games, so the public and kids are welcome to attend. There'll be food provided by law enforcement, there'll be vehicles and equipment on display, and the library is going to be having an event that evening for people. Actually, during the day, they can go over and make some lights, I guess I don't know what the name of them is, they're going to make lights during the day, and then at about nine o'clock that evening, walk around the park with the lights on a stick. So there's a number of different things, and it's definitely expanded over past years, and we would strongly encourage any of the public to attend and take advantage and meet our staff and check out our equipment.
I'd also like to point out that the expense related, this would be covered by the funds, some of the funds seized during our drug...
Good. Questions for Chief Mastin?
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you to you and your officers for the continued work on the drug-related warrants and taking young people out of those homes where that activity is occurring. I know it's a difficult, very difficult job, and do appreciate, and I know the community appreciates that continuing. Look forward to being with you on August the 1st. Thank you. Ellie, did you have something for the council?
Here in council, like...
Quarterly report? Yep. A great deal of activity with seventy-four building permits being issued by your office. That's very, very good. It shows a lot of investment in the communities going on. Questions for the building inspector? Thank you for the report. Thanks for the good work. We'll move to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Counsel Doba?
Just a reminder, we have a budget and finance meeting on Monday, July 24th, 2:00 p.m.
Budget committee, July 24th, 2:00 p.m., here in the council chambers. Looking to have a public works committee meeting on Wednesday, July the 26th, at 1:00 Further from council?
Mr. Mayor, just a report that I attended the dragon race opening ceremony in your stead.
Thank you.
It was pretty neat to paint the eyes of the dragon and find out what that's all about. The only bad thing was is that our International Falls team lost in the first heat. But it was a great event, it's pretty neat to see eighteen people get in a boat and start paddling down the river, so.
Thank you for doing that.
When, I got to get public works in my calendar, say that again.
July 26th at 1:00 p.m. I have my written report, so I think it's fine. Hearing nothing then further on boards and commissions? Anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Thank you for your attendance this evening. We have correspondence on the 2016 population estimates by the state demographer, and the shovel-ready information with regard to the multimodal distribution center. With that, reminder again of the budget and finance committee meeting, the public works committee meeting, national night out. The next city council meeting will be Monday, August the 7th, at 4:30 p.m. There being nothing further to come over the council, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.